The public hearing for consideration of the proposed annexation of certain property to the city which Klein Homes, Inc. has petitioned to annex. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Caddell.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitton.
Here.
Alderman Police. Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Quorum is present. Let the record reflect that notice of this hearing was duly published in the Daily Herald Newspaper. Copy of the published legal notice will be made a part of the record as Exhibit A. The property under discussion is legally described in the legal notice attached here to as Exhibit A. The property bears the common address of 5 N 010 and 5 N 125 Wooddale Road. Any individual present tonight who would like to present testimony concerning the proposed annexation agreement and the annexation must be first placed under oath. I will also ask that you please raise your hand and be called upon to testify. To allow as many people as possibly heard, your remarks will be limited to five minutes. I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation? Mr. Subak? Would you be sworn, please?
I do. For the record, my name is Marshall Subak. I should be representing the fisher Scott Klein and Klein Homes. My client is seeking a continuance of the formal annexation, but complete the public hearing of the final approval of the subdivision. Thank you, I've got it. Which is Items 1, 2, and 3 under Item 11, Roman Number 11, would like to be continued. The reason for the continuance is because of the dire economic conditions of the housing market right now. It's unfortunately, it's not viable as a project to start. Once the annexation is completed, the property will now be taxed as nine buildable lots. In addition, my client will incur additional engineering fees as well as attorney's fees to complete the annexation. So we are respectively requesting a continuance of this matter as long as possible. My client will agree to abide by our informal agreement that we will not touch any of the trees on the property, and we will continue to maintain the property as if it was located within the city corporate limits. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning this annexation? This is not the general public comment regarding other matters in the meeting. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. The council will commence deliberations on the proposal to enter into the annexation agreement to annex the property or table later this evening. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton.
Yes.
Motion is carried, and the public hearing is closed. This is now the public hearing for consideration of the proposed annexation of certain property to the city which Jeffrey and Lily Burris have petitioned to annex. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton.
Yes.
I declare quorum as present. Let the record reflect that notice of this hearing was duly published in the Daily Herald Newspaper. A copy of the published legal notice will be made a part of the record as Exhibit A. Property under discussion is legally described in the legal notice attached here to as Exhibit A. Property bears the common address of 5 N 061 Wooddale Road. Any individual present tonight who would like to present testimony concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation must first be placed under oath. I also ask that you please raise your hand to be called upon to testify. To allow as many people as possibly be heard, your remarks will be limited to five minutes. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation? Anyone who wishes to address the Burris annexation?
Well, it's our property. Do I need to say something?
Sir, if you'd go to the podium. And first raise your right hand, be placed under oath.
Yes.
And if you'd start with your name and address.
Jeff Burris, B-U-R-R-I-S, and the address is 5 N 061 Wooddale Road.
Very good.
We're ready to go when you are.
We're ready to accept you as quickly as possible.
Okay.
We're glad to have you as future members of our community. Is there any other general comments you want to make as to how you want to develop the property, or?
No, we're just making the house bigger, that's all.
Very good.
Yeah.
That's it?
Thank you.
Is there any other citizen who wishes to address the Burris annexation? Hearing then, I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. The council will commence deliberations on the proposal to enter into the annexation agreement and to annex the property at a future date to be announced on a future agenda. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, will please call the roll.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton.
Yes.
That passes, the hearing is closed. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of Wooddale. Roll call, please.
Alderman Caddella.
Here.
Alderman Knite.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitton.
Here.
Alderman Police. Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Quorum being present, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 6, 2008?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any comments, corrections, additions? Now, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Minutes are approved. May I ever have a motion to approve the bills? Alderman Wesley?
I obtain a motion of $211,319.62.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Knite.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewitton.
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the city council? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, starting with Mr. Moran. Frank Moran?
Is that upside down?
No, you do not.
Oh, okay.
You're good, good to go.
Thank you. Frank Moran, I live in Royal Oaks Drive, I live in Royal Oaks. I've been living in Royal Oaks since 1983. And presently, I am the Director of Grounds in Royal Oaks, and I've had basically on all board positions since I've been in it, since my parents were there in 1966. I've held most all the positions in Royal Oaks. And I wanted to speak today a little bit about what's going on in certain areas of our community, and we take, and we go down, here's the main entrance, and here's the secondary entrance on Royal Oaks Drive, which is Sherwood Drive. We'll take that all the way to the end, and go over here, and at this point, there was a big couple of sewers that were like a berm, really a tremendous situation that went over there. It was more or less undetected as to what those were for. And that's what I was here, one of the reasons why I was here, to ask what those berms are for, because it seems to me that I learned through talking to different people in the area to the west, this is the west here, that these berms were put there for air release. And they were to carry all of the water from the west, making a substantial amount of turns in order to have some kind of an air release situation in here and go further south to the Deer Path Road area to carry the water there. And my question is, you know, if it ever plugged up anywhere here, these berm sewers that were put in here, they would have to overflow, and if they overflowed, they would come into Royal Oaks from the west. This situation exists now with Woodbine Drive here with a 12-inch pipe coming into our retention pond from the west. Also over here, we have ponds that are filled with algae in an unincorporated area of Wooddale, and they overflow into Lake Royal, which is our retention pond, the name of our retention pond. And when we had the last rain in September, this whole island that you see here was completely covered in water, and all of our electrical units in there that we have to keep this retention pond in good shape for the city of Wooddale, so that they wouldn't have any problem taking care of the water out this way. Ultimately, that travels out this way to a very expensive piping network that was developed by the city of Wooddale maybe 20 years ago, which flowed into the Park Royal condominiums retention pond, which ultimately flowed into the piping network under Route 83 here. This, if this plugs up here, I mean, we, if these drains are plugging up or carrying more water into the Royal Oaks area, then what we have is a further overfill of our retention pond. Then the question becomes if we, if we're trying to keep this retention pond in quality shape for ourselves and the city of Wooddale, then when something goes wrong with the electrical, the one question is, who pays for the electrical switching network that we have to take care of the fountains that are here and here, and that keep the water moving and keep the algae down? These two ponds over here fill this retention pond with algae big time. Before we did what we did, it was like two, three inches thick with algae. And based on that, you know, you look for biological problems like the West Nile virus with mosquitoes and everything else. But the question becomes here, the big question is coming here into this area, into this piping network goes from this pond right down here into one of these lots, I think it's this lot, and it fills into a, what you call a vault, which is a tremendous vault, which is, I don't know, 12 feet wide by five or six feet, which when we looked at it with, I looked at it with our city engineer, Dave Graff, we took the top off, we saw debris in there. Then we questioned the situation about the debris in there, and then we found out through working with, you know, all the administrative people of Wooddale, that there was no way that they could put the truck in there, the big truck that cleans out this vault. It's because over here on Hiawatha Trail, they didn't make a public access, little narrow access for the truck to back into and clean the vault out. So therefore, the vault can never be cleaned out, it looks like. If that's the case, then you have a wall of water coming from Hiawatha Trail like this, and you have the Lake Royal or the retention pond coming like this. And the only effect it has is there in our retention pond, it has to go like this and fill up with water. When it fills up with water, we have the electrical problems that develop on this island where all of our electrical units are, and when they get wet, they short out. And the secondary supplemental on this is that if you can't clean the vault out, then there's something wrong, unfortunately, or there appears to be something wrong, there appears to be something wrong, with the infrastructure of the city of Wooddale in terms of stormwater review or stormwater release. Because if you have a bad rain like we had in September, well, I guess everybody had a problem. But if this thing flood, this yard in here, on Noahood Drive, it filled up with four feet of water against this lot line, which was Hiawatha Trails. And each house has a lot, and there's no way for the city of Wooddale to clean out the vault. So that means that if you have a really bad rain, the people who live next to that vault will flood. They didn't. But it was 30 feet from the vault up to the patio doors. So those are my questions, and the area that I'm really concerned about with is if you're diverting water into this Deer Path Road and you have to use Royal Oaks to do it, then is the infrastructure correct? Because we got this problem right here. We've got a 12-inch pipe coming into our retention pond here, and we've also got two ponds that are filled with algae that are real thick that also drain into the retention pond, which we're trying to keep algae free. So those are my questions.
All right, before I ask Mr. Graff or Mr. Kramer to respond, I think we have two more comments on this. Mr. Zito, Ronald Zito?
My name is Ronald Zito. Did she leave? Z-I-T-O. I live at 462 Mulberry Lane in Wooddale. I'm not here about the flooding problems and the retention ponds and the overflow that comes into our subdivision. I'm here about the condition of our streets. I was told by our alderman that our subdivision is scheduled to have the streets repaved in the year 2014. Our streets won't last that long. I wrote, each one of you members, and the mayor too, sir, I wrote all of you a letter back in May addressing this problem. I brought some pictures tonight of Mulberry Lane. There's...
Could you give these to the mayor, please?
There's six pictures there of Mulberry Lane. Mulberry Lane is this right here. The pictures that you're seeing are just from this part of the circle here, about 75% of that circle. It is deteriorating in such a manner that it's gravel, it's terrible. It's worse than the alleys of the city of Chicago. The aldermen have been out there and they've looked at it. We've had a couple, there you go. You can see there how bad the streets are, how they're deteriorating.
Mr. Zito, you need to either use the portable or use, I guess they're going to get the portable for you.
Oh, I was just going to point out...
But you need to, we do rebroadcast for all the citizens, so...
How's that? Is that better? Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just to show you on this picture here, this area here, it's all deteriorated. That's all gravel, the asphalt is gone. Look at the parts here, these are holes, okay? If you go to the next one, you've got the same thing here. Look how bad this is. This is all deteriorated. This is the island, this is the gravel around the island in the middle of the cul-de-sac, and this is supposed to be paved asphalt. All these little things here, you're seeing here, these are the gravel that's deteriorated. It's all stones. If you want to go to the next one again. Okay, this is another picture of it here. That's just, I mean, this is a, this here is what your city crew did to try to fix the problem. They brought a truck out and they put a couple of shovels of asphalt on it and drove over it with their truck tires. They said that's how they fixed it. And I says, you can't do that because it's not going to stay, it's not going to hold. And you've done it before, they've been out there a few times, they've done that, it just deteriorates more and more, and there's more and more gravel out there. Your city suite cleaner doesn't want to come out or didn't want to come out because there's no curbs, he didn't want to ruin his equipment, and what we have here is we're, it's an embarrassment not only to our subdivision but to the city of Wooddale to have streets like this in the village, in the city. Here again, this happens to be my neighbor's drive, this is my driveway here, and here's, these are holes, this is all a big hole here, it's deteriorated. Again here, these are a couple of patches where you can see they put a shovel full of asphalt here, there, and around, and then they drove with the truck tire to try to fix it, and it just keeps coming up. What needs to be done, here again, you can see, these are all the cracks in it, this again is a picture, this is my driveway here, I believe. And again, these are all the cracks, this is how it's deteriorating, this are the asphalt that they tried to repair it with. These are the holes, this is where it's deteriorating. It's just, there's nothing there. I mean, it's, you can just pick it up, it's all loose gravel in your hands. It's definitely not going to last the winter, and it's definitely not going to last the year 2014. What I would like to have done, and what I've asked to have done, and I've written the letter and I've talked to our alderman and everything, is to have it properly repaired to make it last at least until 2014, okay? And I think by doing so, if you start right here and you do about maybe three-quarters of the circle, and that's probably all you'd have to do, maybe 75% of the circle part, just this part here, I don't know if you need to grind it down and then just put another layer of two, three, four inches on there, or whatever you do, that would make it last, at least until you're ready to come in, because in 2012, 2014, you're scheduled to put storm sewers and curbs and all that. But there's no way it's going to last the winter. Like, if you come through there with a snowplow in the wintertime, we're going to be living on completely gravel. And that's, that's not my idea of living. That's all I had to say, and anybody else had to say something?
Can I add to this?
Let me, I have one more comment yet. I'll come back to you. Alderman Coles?
About stormwater?
Did they all see them over there?
Yeah, we seen them over there. We seen them over there.
Okay, you want to see them both?
Just see them just for a minute.
Pass them along to everybody, you can keep them if you need them. I've got them where home.
I've been over there several times, over there to the area that he's talking about, and I've been at the two, the sewer covers and the property on the end of our knoll, and I asked Dave if he would, see if he could contact the county and take a sample of the water, because I think it's contaminated by the septic tank. So he's going to try to get that, and that was one of the things. And do I want it on the stormwater now? The people at 480, Keith Stubert, who's the head of the Homeowners Association of 480 Condominiums there, was here last week and said they, they said to come back last night to a meeting, and he ended up going to the library, he ended up coming here, and nobody had left a note saying that it was canceled. And he called me at my house about 8:00, and he says, where is the meeting? And so I went to the calendar, I looked up, I says, it says City Hall, but nobody had left on the meeting, and they canceled the meeting because I guess they didn't have a quorum. So I think somebody should have left a note for people, they were here with four or five people that I wanted to talk, and they didn't show up. And that's the only thing I got to say.
I see the manager made a note on that, we'll take care of that in the future. Before I come back to you a second time, was there anybody else who wanted to address the city council this evening? Mr. Moran?
Thank you. Along with Mr. Zito's comments, I wanted to make just a comment on the street report that we had, the city of Wooddale made a nice street report on February 21, 2008, and in this area here that you, that Ron was talking about, Mulberry Lane, which you've all seen, they rated this Mulberry Lane as an 82 under the street report. So the reason I'm questioning this situation regarding the infrastructure here on these streets, that's the reason for it too, is because it's so bad and was rated so good. You know what I mean? And then I was going to ask the mayor, I was talking to Ron Graff, the engineer, and he and I walked through the community together, along with Gary Holm. We had a nice walk, walkabout in Royal Oaks. They did a great job, and I had a lot of respect for your administrative staff. And one of the things that I told Dave tonight is that this situation here for Wooddale, this is, of course, can I express an opinion, Mr. Mayor? Can I express an opinion?
This is citizen comment, so...
Okay. I just want to know if it's okay. I'm not interested in, I'm looking for on the street report the cost, I know it was in there, and it was put down with a lot of other streets that had to repair. We have a lot of work to do in Wooddale, and it's very costly, and it says estimated cost at $3,052,000. And I said to David, I said, listen, I said, these, why don't you do it in stages? This is a little bit too much for the city of Wooddale, I think, that you have to spend $3,520,000. This was last year, you've got an inflationary cost here, which means it's going to go up. Why don't you just engineer all of this area here and break it down and do it, you know, and once, you know, one a year or something like that, and cover the worst streets like Ron was showing you? We've got Noahood Drive here, the west part of Noahood Drive, it's considered a bad street, and not do it all at once like that, because it's too disruptive. You got all the people, you know, there's all stuff everywhere around the whole community, and it just, I don't think it's a good idea to do it that way over two years. I think it would be too disruptive and too expensive for the city of Wooddale. I think it would be better handled if it was handled in stages and increments, and then that way, you know, you could adjust, you know, as far as the money part of it is concerned, because this is a lot of money. As a matter of fact, on this report that was given here in February last year, Royal Oaks has got the highest amount of money here of all these streets to do. So that's why I think, and in my opinion, this isn't a good idea to do it that way. Not only that, but you have to take cash and put the cash all at once, something may come up, something that may be better for the city of Wooddale that they may have to handle than this area. Our area's a good area, I like our area, but in the overall picture, it may be better if you sort of like planned a little more in detail on this. if you sort of like planned a little more in detail on this thing, because it's so much money. Well, it's a pleasure chatting with you fellows.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Hi, Mr. Graff and Mr. Kramer. The issues raised were the berms at the rear of the subdivision, algae from the adjacent pond, the electric on the island at Royal Oaks, cleaning out the vault, and possibly phasing in the street repairs in the Royal Oaks subdivision.
Where to start? I'll start with, I'll start with the vault. The vault does not have a blockage in it. It may be dirty, but our crews inspected it both after the September storm and then last week when we, the question was raised again about it. So the vault doesn't have a blockage. If it did have a blockage, it's true, we couldn't get a flusher truck into the backyard, although we could flush from the street manhole which connects to that line. So I'm not worried about having a blockage that we couldn't get to. I suppose, worst case, we'd have to send someone down into that chamber, it's not very deep, although it is very wide and long. So, and it's something we can keep an eye on in the future, but again, it's, there's no blockage in there. I would kind of caution everyone to not read too much into problems with detention ponds that developed in that September 14 rainstorm. Royal Oaks Pond was designed probably in the 1960s, certainly not the level of rainfall that we got this past September, which was, you know, probably approached the 100-year design storm that we use now, and certainly much greater than the design storm they used for that pond. So I don't think it was any surprise that the pond filled up. It's to be expected. I suppose we can look at the drainage system, well, we'll have to look at the drainage system when we do the streets, we'll be adding a whole new drainage system, so we can evaluate the existing at that time, unless there, you know, if there's a desire on this part of the City Council to do a study of that sooner, we can do that, but otherwise, we would be looking at it when we reconstruct those streets. But again, the fact that the pond filled up on September 14th, I don't know that I would read too much into that, but we'll keep an eye on the outlet works and that junction chamber in particular. The other item, the pond to the west, I do have a call into the DuPage County Health Department. The question was raised whether a septic field was leaking into that pond. It is an unincorporated property and would be under the jurisdiction of DuPage County, and the Health Department handles anything related to leaking septic field. So hopefully, we can get them out there to check that. As far as the algae goes, I don't.